Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, is this honorary done?
It's on, okay.
Alright. Um. I don't know where Scott put it under or should we do it first? We can do it first, okay. Um, we have another agenda item. And so before we adopt the agenda, um, we'll add it. Um, basically under new business, um, above A, um, add Scott at least.
I fixed it.
Yay.
Mr. Mayor, I would also recommend we also add a section for public comment. I don't see it on the screen.
Fix. Um. Now I have to put that in between old and new business.
Or you can put it before the business.
Before our old business.
Alright. Wait, wait a minute, Scott.
I'm waiting.
And again, everything. Alright, so with that added, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with public comment added and Scott at least added to ID A as ID A under new business. I'll second.
Motion's made in second, so in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any? Um, now Scott, you might as well sit down. We got old business first.
No, you just may already put public comment first.
Oh, public, public comment, I'm sorry. Bring public comment. Yes, you have none. Old business, swimming pool.
Now, we have it on here twice, so I am more than okay with doing it.
Let's, let's just wait till we get into new business. Alright, Scott.
Now get up.
Yeah.
Okay, um. On six nine, uh, six nine two twenty, zero two twenty eight in the morning, our Lakeview nine one center received a call from a person saying him and his wife are traveling towards Lakeview, going to the hospital. The RP, which is the reporting party, uh, says his wife is having contractions every five minutes. At that time, uh, the emergency medical dispatcher Rebecca Hammond told her, it's time for you to stop and pull over to the side of the road because a baby is going to be born. And then at that time, uh, she toned up her medical, if you could session respond. And they were about thirty minutes from Lakeview. And so at two twenty eight, we received the call. At two thirty four, a healthy baby girl was born by her mother and father alongside the road with the help of our emergency dispatcher. That walked her through the walk. Actually, she said, he pretty much knew what he was doing, but she was there for support. And kept in constant contact with medical for Rebecca Hammond. And then about thirty minutes later, the ambulance showed up. So. I purchased a stork pen for the mayor to present to our, uh, to Rebecca Hammond's emergency dispatcher, a stork pen for helping, uh, somebody in our community deliver a baby girl at two thirty four in the morning.
Was that her first, uh, on the phone delivery?
I paid her last. There must be a lot of cows and stuff.
Yeah. And she.
They compare us to cows.
She is guilty, so she's gone through all the training, and she said this was really cool.
That is very clear.
And she was very proud of it, and then I told her I'd put her in for a state award for being a hero of state. So we'll find out if the athlete Nina recognizes her.
Fantastic. We'll give her, give her our thanks and congratulations.
Alright, and hopefully we'll get her, um, come to the next meeting, or you can pin her or come over to dispatch.
Um. When is your next, uh, our meeting? It'll be a while, won't it?
Yeah.
No. We got something in the, in the last, on the tenth of the thirty, I believe.
Yeah, and we're trying to see if we can get the family, get a picture with her and family, but there's a lot of, have that add.
No, with them all together, like Hammond and the family.
If, but you're gonna do it, yeah.
If the family wants. If they, yeah.
Or at least Hammond.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good. Was it a local family?
Yes, we can't say without the permission.
Well. Yeah, yeah, that's true.
That's true.
Everybody's local.
Right? Yeah. You know it wasn't our one's kid.
No.
Once.
He's not three minutes late for the hospital.
No.
And then thirty seconds.
Alright, let's move on. New business, um, ODOT A D project. Gentlemen?
Okay, so we just did some introductions real quick. So I'm Howard Postlethwaite. I'm with ODOT in La Grande, and I'm working as kind of the, a project leader coordinator for working through project development.
Uh, Jared Johnson. I'm the area manager for, uh, Klamath and Lake Counties. So I know some people.
I'm Sean Echardt, um, with David Evans Consulting, who will be the construction on the project. Uh, Paul Stan with David Evans Associates, um, working, uh, project manager to, alright. Manage project, uh, to, uh, to deliver the project, uh, to you guys. We've got a bunch of people on the phone. We want to do the phone interaction.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, can you guys do a phone interactions, please? Uh, actually on the computer.
Bill Nash with ODOT, um, also with Region Four.
Uh, this is Rob Hardy, I'm an inter-rideway agent with ODOT, uh, based out of Ben. And Sean Hurd, uh, project manager, working for ODOT, over the track. Working for David Evans, and it's up here, who is working for, oh yeah.
Uh, Daniel is Littlebinko with David Evans and Associates, uh, working with Paul and Sean, and I'll be at control on the screen here in a little bit.
And there's Lance on also.
Yeah, this is Lance on with David Evans Associates, uh, helping out also.
So I think that's probably the end of the phone. Just kind of a brief, um, recap. So we are here in December and we were talking about the project. We had more, just kind of some concepts and gap plans. We've moved along in planning, develop, uh, and product development now. We've got some more plans, more concrete plans. And we're to the point now where Rod is gonna talk about the right-of-way process that needs to be done for this project. Because we're finding that there were some existing encroachments, i.e. the sidewalks were built onto property, and so we need to correct that with landowners. We have some situations where we're gonna need temporary easements to allow the contractor to have room to, you know, walk on property, set storms, do stuff like that. And also, um, I, there's part of the right-of-way process, and I'll let Rod explain this more. You know, there's areas where there's signs and things on audience with the business that are actually encroaching on your right-of-way. And I don't think you really want people to move their sign, but Rod's gonna explain how that would be handled in the right-of-way process. And then also in the design discussion that we have, you know, we've got some tricky corners. We've got some places where we're gonna need some road closures, uh, need some temporary, you know, um, closure for people to do their work. So we want to just kind of get, uh, council's, um, opinion on that. And just show you where we have some of the trickier things that we're running into. So, um, we want to start with the right-of-way discussion.
Uh, sure, just so, just so everybody knows, uh, folks on the phone, hopefully they can hear, it's going through my computer, so hopefully they can hear everybody here. Uh, that might be a little hard for them to hear. Uh, we can hear them and they can see what, what we see here on the screen, which is great, because last time we were here, I think we got a jigsaw on the wall. Um, so, um, yeah, so just so for everybody's, so everybody knows, we're doing, uh, okay, somebody's not up to speed. Uh, uh, ODOT is doing a, um, a curb ramp project, or going, going through town, um, all the way through town to, uh, curb ramp, replace all the curb ramps on each corner, um, on the facilities only, uh, to make, to, to ensure that, uh, they are, uh, to, 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 to make them compliant, to make them ADA compliant, that, um, Americans with disabilities that. Make sure continually for those handicap, uh, handicaps to, uh, a lot of, it's focused around wheelchairs and such. But, um, in general, it should, I, I can't think of a, a spot, some spots are, like Howard said, are pretty tricky. But this should, this should improve every corner, make each corner, uh, accessible, uh, to, to, to folks. Um, it should, should make, uh, the whole town, um, much more accessible, um, to all different types of, all different types of, uh, folks. So that's the project in general. Uh, we plan to go to construction next spring, um, and there's a lot within that. Um, but it's kind of come to an overview, overview of the project for even, didn't realize that. Uh, so, uh, actually, let's have, why don't we have, uh, Rob go first and kind of tell us about right-of-way. Rob was, is with ODOT, uh, Region Four, uh, and he's gonna tell us about the right-of-way, uh, uh, process. And then we'll go to Daniel, who's the DEA, and kind of point out a couple of spots. Uh, right now we've got, uh, an aerial up, and we'll kind of go back and forth between aerial and, uh, in our plans, uh, just in a couple of different locations. To, you know, show general concepts of what Rob's been talking, what, what, what Rob will talk about. And then if you guys have a question, we'll be, we'll be happy to have an answer. So, uh, Rob, could you go ahead and kind of give a, kind of give a general overview of stuff, and then, um, uh, we'll have Daniel, uh, uh, point things out on plans and aerial, and kind of, kind of how we're going, kind of how we're going about things. Um, yeah, Rob?
Sure, thank you. Um, once again, Rob Hardy, I'm a inter-rideway agent. And, uh, so, uh, basically for this project, it looks like there's gonna be about sixty, um, properties where we'll need to, um, get easements, uh, either a temporary easement or a permanent easement. Um, working with DEA, it doesn't look like the impacts are gonna be that great. So, um, you know, the majority of these are, you know, the sidewalk is, you know, six inches, a foot over the right-of-way line. So these are pretty minor things, but at the end of the day, um, it does go outside of the right-of-way. Um, so we do need to basically acquire a, a permanent right, and a lot of businesses, like I said, some instances, they'll just be a temporary easement. Um, but we'll work with all the individual property owners to, um, work through that process. And, um, the, the, the process that we use, the same process will be used on any project, no matter of the size. But, um, uh, we work really closely with property owners to make sure that we're coming up with a, um, a fair value. Uh, we'll be using a, a fee eraser to, um, work on those values. Uh, you know, we try to communicate as much as we can and work through any potential issues that we, um, have with any of the individual property owners. But, um, it'll, that's pretty much the, the way this process will work. Um, right now, we're about probably, probably about two months before we start, um, you know, making contact with, um, the property owners. To get them in touch with our erasers, um, uh, start that part of the process. And then, um, about two months after that, we'll, um, begin the, um, process of negotiating with them and, um, uh, reaching an agreement on what the state is gonna be paying them for, for the permanent easement and temporary easements. Um, but overall, that's pretty much the, the gist of what we'll be doing. Um, like I said, I, right now, it looks like there's gonna be over sixty individual, um, properties that'll be, that'll have a right-of-way file with them. Um, and what we'll be asking the city to do, I think Howard's gonna be, um, presenting with, uh, an agreement later tonight, um, or later in this discussion. If not shortly, uh, hopefully shortly, but, um, as part of that agreement, there'll be another, um, right-of-way services agreement. Where it'll spell out what ODOT's gonna be doing, um, for the right-of-way. And basically, we'll be asking for your concurrence on, um, letting ODOT do that work. Um, so part of that will be passing a resolution, um, giving us the, um, authority to acquire the right-of-way. Um, most of this will, most of the right-of-way will be transferred over to the city at the end of the project. So these permanent easements, um, will go to the city. Uh, the temporary easements will extinguish. Um, and, um, that's pretty much, uh, you know, pretty much the next step from the holes of work that's gonna happen, uh, to, to, to the other right-of-way. And, um, that's pretty much in a nutshell, uh, I think everything that's right-of-way related. Um, is there any, any questions I could answer related to that?
Are you guys expecting that to be approved tonight, that potential agreement? So obviously.
Perfect, okay, so it's just be presented to council, council, and I'll have the council go over it.
And we just wanted to make sure that's the case, because obviously, that's kind of its own topical issue. So I just want to make sure the council and city staff have the ability to flip that over.
I brought some copies and I'll email the, um, the file, the, the word file, kind of shell.
Permit.
Give you a contact name for the, 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 that's working on that for ODOT. Where are they at? Could you run through that real quick, real fast?
Where, uh, where, where the right-of-way tapes at?
Yeah.
All, all through town, through, through.
Everywhere?
Uh, through, through the, through the ODOT system.
Okay, so every, every sidewalk.
Street gate.
All the streets gate stuff. All the streets gate stuff is encroaching on.
Not, no, not all of it.
Yeah, why don't we show you a couple of examples of what, of what we're doing? Uh, Danny, go, go ahead and, why don't you go ahead and, oh, yeah, so Danny's kind of showing you our project limits. And so what, what the purple is showing, uh, here on Daniel's screen is the, the project limits. Um, actually probably a little bit more, but you can see the highway and the red, the red squares that are shown on there. I don't know if you guys can see those. These red squares here are, uh, each corner that we're working on. And so those are the corners to which these tech, these easements and right-of-way files could be.
I see that. I, I just wanted to know where the right-of-way is.
Where's the majority of them are?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're scattered. Sure, I mean, some, some of the, uh, actually Danny, why don't you go to your plans and go ahead and, and pick a couple of intersections.
What about that intersection with the tree stone?
As far as, uh, what, what, are you, are you asking about the design or the right-of-way part?
The right-of-way part.
Um, Danny, if you go, can you go to, uh, Seventh Street there?
Uh, no, North Seventh Street.
Yeah, North Second.
That and the, um.
Oh.
No.
Canal, that canal.
Right, yeah, so, so what we're showing, by the way, uh, just to let everybody know, we are about ninety-eight percent through the plans here. We actually just had a meeting this morning. We submitted our, um, our draft final set of plans. We got comments. We, we met this morning with ODOT and Ben, uh, to talk about those. So there'll be minor changes. This is actually one that there'll be some changes. However, we're, we're talking about the stump, uh, is right there at corner two. Daniel, go ahead and talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so, uh, so we're waiting on some input regarding our proposed design here. But in any extent that stump falls within our, um, in order to mitigate compliant width of sidewalk, it's about, I don't know, four feet or so to that stump. So, um, currently we have shown a temporary easement at that corner. Temporary easement being the blue line you'll see here on the lands, if you can see them. Um, and that just gives us a six months or sort of working window. And like Rob said, that'll go away at the end of the project, and that's just working room to do the work. That'll all be restored to previous condition. Should be no impact there. And then, um, we have the green line. You see here are permanent easements where, uh, those would be for sidewalk. And, uh, in order to make a ramp system at this corner that doesn't, uh, doesn't fall in the middle of a driveway, it requires us to go outside of the right-of-way. And, um, need a, to easement to place the sidewalk there. So you can kind of see this line work here is our proposed, um, ramp configuration. And the existing, um, existing ramp is back here, kind of the gray outline work.
I didn't zoom in there with the satellite view, so we can kind of see what we're looking at.
Oh. Seriously, there is that.
The corner we all know in Rod.
Yeah, but then without doing something, there's absolutely no way to do extra point to do that, so it's understandable.
So it's double stump.
So does that include? It looks like it starts at South Ninth Street.
Yeah.
Would that include sidewalk as well?
No, it doesn't. Just the corners.
Just the corners.
So are we gonna make sure we don't have a puddle right there, the radius?
Uh, specifically this location or in general?
Well.
Like, it'd be interesting, same, e- e- even way you cut it, whether you're talking about this corner. Yeah, so, so this project, uh, is, uh, the priority of this project is obviously curb ramps. And as part of that, uh, we cannot, we, we must make sure that, uh, puddles are not, uh, part of the pedestrian, not part of the ramp. You can't have puddles in the ramp. Um, will it, will it address all drainage problems? No, it won't. Um, if there's a, if there's a puddle there now, and, uh, there's just nowhere for us to take it as part of the scope of this project, we're gonna move the puddle away from the ramp, but it'll still be a puddle there. Um, if we can address it, we will address it.
So I'm curious, why won't they include sidewalks in this? To me, it seems quite like that ADA turn. Corner with no sidewalk.
That's, that's what the state got sued about, Rob. The state got sued, um, to provide access, uh, through the curb ramps. So that's, I don't know what's gonna happen.
That's the minimum the state has to do.
I don't know what's gonna, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Um, you know, but right now, the state has to address roughly twenty-six thousand, uh, ramps around on our system.
Yeah, I hear you. It makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Because, because, you know, some, some spots we're gonna say, hey, you know, look, uh, you know, twenty-five feet away, there's a, they hold a gap in the sidewalk. People can't even use the sidewalk. Why are you gonna ramp here?
I think ours are lack of sidewalk.
Right, so, I mean, it's all over the place. So, um, yeah, I mean, you're, you're exactly right. Um, this project is.
And I understand that because when they're developed, the competition for sidewalks in, which we didn't probably approach back.
I'm not sure, but I think a lot of the, you know, what better get, these sidewalks, a lot of these installed as part of the streetscape project.
All those sidewalks through there were installed during streetscape.
Then a wall where down the next stop.
There, there needs to be something in there.
Going the other direction, it was kind of.
The contractor checks those radiuses around there. You know, you may have it drawn correct, but we don't end up, we have a, they have a real bad puddle at, uh, North G and North Fort.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in fact, it's not even usable.
Yeah, we, we, we actually, John and I and Howard, we're, we're looking at several, several places.
Well, there's.
Kind of enough for them.
There are several places, and, um, there, there needs to be some quality control.
That's why I'm contracting right behind.
Sure, yes.
Uh, there's, there's some really tricky, uh, catch basins, if you go back a block, uh, south a block to Sixth Street. There's like catch basins four feet apart, and there's catch basins about eighteen inches below grade. And, and I know it's not a catch basin project, but it looks like the one is gonna be right in your ramp area. And that's near the area where I was talking about, where they don't actually drain, they don't go anywhere. Doesn't make sense to put in a really nice ramp, you know, and then, and then have an eighteen inch deep drainage hole there.
Well, we are, we are adjusting inlets and things that are within the, the limits of, of the work on the radius. So inlets will be adjusted up to match the grade, so those, I'm assuming, I don't know this particular spot. So if it's within the area of work, those will be adjusted up to match the existing ground, um, because, yeah, I saw a couple like that.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna leave, we can't leave it in the area. So it was within the area of the footprint, we're adjusting in that certain network area. And, and in some locations, for example, at Fourth Street will be added in, um, to, to catch that, uh, to catch that puddle.
Okay.
That'd be good. Uh, during the streetscape, they ignored our request, so we're not gonna forget this.
We're not all the right-of-ways that were acquired during streetscape. I mean, those don't have a, they don't end, right? I mean, out of the temporary off-site ones would, but all those should have got transferred to the town. So we should be able to work most of those sites off of the right-of-ways that were acquired during streetscape in two thousand and one.
Uh, Rob, do you know anything about the, the, the right-of-ways that were, uh, required during that to, to answer Jeff's question? I'm not sure if you could hear it very well.
Yeah, and, um, I, I don't. So, um, that'd be a good question for us to run through survey and see if there's any possibility that they missed some of that data. Um, I think that, I'm pretty sure that, um, survey would have picked up any, um, permanent, you know, existing permanent easements that were out there. But we can definitely run that through them. Um, if there's a permanent easement for sidewalk, there's a good possibility that we could, you know, if we stayed within that footprint, um, that would, you know, that'd be possible, uh, so we can definitely look into that.
I mean, the reason that the stump didn't get dealt with in two thousand and one is because there was a living tree at the tree at that point, and they didn't want the tree taken down.
There was a, another one where there's a canal, and then, because I remember talking to you about it, I think it's.
East side.
It's the same, yeah, same intersection, yep.
Yep.
And so I asked, uh, Jeff where that went, and I, I guess it goes out and then down, and then down the street. So I know there was a concern about the corner that could.
Yeah, that's part, that's one of the, that's one of the corners, uh, not the one with the stump, but wherever you're talking, that, that we're working on, on, uh, is that we're still working through the design on that.
Okay.
So we're not quite, we don't show that what we're showing. Um, Daniel, could you, could you go through another corner and kind of show the temporary, or, yeah, temporary easement and, uh, maybe construction easement and right-of-way? Kind of show, show a little bit of, of that stuff, looks.
Yeah, sure, so I was gonna start down here at, uh, South Ninth Street. Here's our, uh, our plan for that corner. Um, like I said before, we have a, uh, right-of-way line, um, is shown in the, in the orange in these drawings. Permanent easement is green, um, in the area that we will have a, um, rights to, I guess, for the sidewalk. But it doesn't require any vacating of existing facilities or, um, you know, private, um, property. And then the temporary easement, which is gives us the work area. And, uh, we had a little, I'll bring, show this one on satellite view real quick. So it's south end of town here, this corner. This one we're talking about, um, show back up here. This is a picture with approximate, um, right-of-way line drawn in with the, the current scenario. That would be that orange line. And this would be our proposed, um, design for that location. See the orange line and then this green area being, um, what we're gonna take as a permanent easement in this location. And then the blue area being that temporary easement for work area. So it's just the corner of this curve that ends up falling outside of right-of-way. So we give ourselves a little more room if, uh, we happen to need to carry that ramp a little farther than we planned to because of utilities or slopes or whatnot. So that's why you'll see it not stop right at the, right at the, like, the pinch point. Basically, we'll go a little further down the road.
Are you, are you gonna mark, are you gonna mark the new right-of-way?
Uh, it'll be marked, uh, for construction, but, uh, not permanently, not permanently.
Can you talk about the, um, work that's gonna be done around the, um, Mexican restaurant and Best Western?
Yeah, uh, Daniel, did you hear that, Daniel?
Uh, yeah, I think the Mexican restaurant and Best Western is that, that question.
Yeah, so this one is a, is a pretty tricky one that we haven't fully worked out either. Uh, you're asking all the tricky corners, because you, you know them, right? We're running into them. So, uh, yeah, that one is a tricky one. Uh, and part of, part of the dilemma on that one is, um, we've got, uh, it's part of that, you, of course, that, that's the, the intersection is all, it's all concrete. Um, and so we're trying to minimize tearing up that concrete, uh, to, for, you know, for several reasons. One's cost, it really, the, the cost really explodes pretty, uh, pretty quickly. Uh, but two, uh, you know, just, just, uh, uh, the work zone area, it just grows and grows and grows. So we have not quite figured this one out, but this is, uh, uh, this is one that we're working on, uh, right now. So Dan, if you could, you wanna talk about that, what we've got right now, which may or may not be the, the final, uh, configuration.
Yeah, so right now we have the, the ramp crossing the highway staying within the, uh, existing. Yeah, so right now we have the, the ramp crossing the highway staying within the uh existing crosswalk, this colored concrete, so really like to stay out of that as much as possible. And then the uh, the ramp crossing the side street. Like it's about twenty feet back of that, um this is a location, you can see the uh existing rightaway is back over the sidewalk. So um our approach for sidewalk that goes up to building faces and the rightaway goes past that, so the um is our sidewalk, sidewalk is outside of rightaway, so in order to instruct the sidewalk all the way up to the buildings, we're requesting a permanent easement right up at the building face. And then we offset a temporary easement just behind that to cover any work to the actual building face we need to do in order to complete the work. Say here, the, the existing rightaway is about where this, this concrete, um edge of this concrete is, and then it comes on a, a radius and hugs the, the front of that building. So in order for our, you know, standards and whatnot, we have to redo this whole area in front of the doorway, and that proves pretty challenging with the, I think it's ten, nine or ten inches of fall between the roadway and the, the entrance there, so um we're, we're pursuing them, through some things that have a, kind of varying levels of impact there.
And, and then for the Best Western, because um some of the work will take in some of the sidewalk, but not all of it, or?
Yeah, let's go down there, that is. That's the southeast corner of Fifth Street. So look at the, look at the street view first. So this corner, tight radius of inlet and um requirements for turning spaces on corners, this provides not, currently there's not enough of a footprint there to uh build a, a compliant ramp, so we have to take out part of this planter. And our plans show projecting about, about the current width of this existing concrete driveway will be what the new width of the sidewalk will need to be coming through here. So um we propose just squaring off the end of this landscaping on the side street to about the end of that retaining wall, and then most likely getting, getting rid of this entire bit that's adjacent to the highway. And probably we have to re-relay uh a block retaining wall up against the concrete one that's currently there, or if that one is sufficiently, maybe an option to use that, but um that work will be outside of rightaway for any work on that wall. Um the side street has plenty of rightaways, you can see here, it looks like there's probably five, six feet, but it hugs that um right where that driveway through that line was basically along the highway, so in order just to complete that wall work, to bring it back to good condition, we have a permanent, permanent easement for sidewalk um at that location, and then going down um south of that, it's just a work area to do the ramp right there, reconstruct the driveway, and then um transition out that, and then want to pave a little um tie-in behind that driveway.
That's one thing that we'll be doing on, um any, any of the driveways that were, that are reconstructed, we'll be purchasing a temporary construction easement to tie back into it, um pin onto the private property. Um so we don't need any uh vertical lifts for the, for the drive-through, so it's a pretty smooth transition from, from the driveway to the, to the from the access to the driveway.
What about the, the corner over there is the standard station?
Which one's that?
Uh the North Fourth and G.
Okay, North Fourth and G, Daniel?
Uh Chevron.
Chevron, oh Chevron, got it, got it.
Head on that way, oh well.
Remember a little there, okay, so yeah, so. Uh again, you can pick another complicated one, if you guys wanna get another complicated, we, we can go up to H Street as well, that's complicated one too, but uh thi- this whole intersection is, uh Jeff, what'd you call it?
Malfunction junction.
Malfunction junction.
Well, yeah.
Um so we're, 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 uh we've got most of the, most of the corners figured out here, but we've got some, we've got some weirdness going on. Um Daniel, just go ahead and talk about that a little bit.
Sure, so uh right now we have um a couple of these kind of modified driveway design, we'll keep the same width. And we'll be sticking, let's see, it's probably easier to look at the street view. The, the ramp will end up being right uptight to this illumination pole, the current location of it, and then rebuilding this driveway as long, as well as a tie-in at the back of it, um concrete, so we can match the existing grades. And looks like we'll, it just, all that stays just barely within rightaway, uh along, let's just get there, fourth. But as it turns the corner, some of our sidewalk encroaches on rightaway, so this uh sign color is only a color you'll see in here, but it's a, an actual fee take of about, give us a photo clearance from our proposed, basically our proposed improvement, so we're a little wiggle room, if something ends up, you know, six inches wide, we're not accidentally trespassing without our knowledge, so that puts a, a good buffer for what's actually like, will be, become um city property afterwards. And uh, see, I don't know if there's a whole lot else to say on this corner.
So is a contractor gonna be required to replace the existing monuments when he tears them out?
Yes.
Okay, that's an actual spec.
Yes.
Are they gonna, oh, it's not there, that's an old picture.
I told him today that that one's gonna go away, there's so much going on in that corner, that streetscape pole is not.
It got hit.
Yep.
Please don't let it slip on.
Yeah, we saw that today.
I didn't. So they're gonna, we're gonna completely eliminate that light and not just relocate it?
It's already been paid for by the people that hit.
Oh.
But they're keep.
It is busy, I have to.
It's a kind of a waste right there, there's so much light there to begin with, and it kinda casts uh a little bit too much light on the sign there. So I, I think it makes more sense for it to go away, it simplifies their project.
Yeah, so I, I see obviously the big concern here is how you guys can do construction with those intersections, especially that being probably one of the worst ones. So what, what, what are you guys proposing for closing that down?
Uh you mean as far as closing the driveway down, or the?
Well, like by the Mexican restaurant, I mean, that doesn't give you a whole lot of room to work there, um because of that yield.
Right.
Uh so what are you guys, are we gonna have to close that down or redirect traffic?
Yeah, uh yes on all of those, uh we'll be, uh so as part of our design, we need to, you know, accommodate both pedestrian and vehicular uh traffic. And so, for example, when we close a corner, um we, we're gonna, we need to uh uh detour pedestrians and tra- and vehicular traffic appropriately. Um in this case, uh John knows, knows the uh, the tra- the temporary, what we call temporary traffic control, knows that a little bit better than me, but I think we're, we're closing down Fourth Street, uh the intended closing on Fourth Street, right, John?
The, the, the lane that goes from three ninety-five north, um so between the Mexican restaurant and that island, that will be closed, that lane will be closed. Because we've got to dig out that whole, that, a portion of that intersection to rebuild it and lift it up, so we can get the ramps in. And so during that time, um there's not enough room with the, about whatever the, the term, Jeff, I think you used it.
Chevron junction.
There we go, okay, so we won't use it, but you guys can. Uh there's not enough room for trucks to make that turning radius with that middle island, so we're gonna have to go to a single lane configuration um for about a week on that corner, uh so trucks can go north, because they've gotta swing out into the opposing lanes to come back on.
With flagging.
With flagging, yeah, so yeah, everything will be under control of the flaggers, um but this is the most complicated uh intersection. There'll be times where we'll need to close, for instance, I think it's G Street down by the Chevron, um just to accommodate pedestrians, for instance. Uh a great example of when, maybe you wouldn't think you'd need it, uh but there's really no other place we could put them without sending them too far out of direction. So there's an example where we'll be routing them across G Street, it'll be cordon for pedestrians, and so we'll close G Street just past uh its connection there to three ninety-five. And, and, and there will be other locations where, as you talk staging, um we have a few other spots on South Sixth, or is it North, South Sixth, I think down in the sim, and South Seventh where we need to close, um where it connects to three ninety-five, um so we have enough room to, for the contractor to work safely. And the only other thing I'd mention, uh since I'm very on traffic control, and, and then you also restrict parking from each corner, right? So when you're, when you're downtown, it'll be anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, we won't close accesses to do that. Um there'll be accesses through that cordon dock area, but we will be restricting parking um during the times of rebuilding those ramps on the city street as well as the O dot side. Then it'll be able to back up uh once the curb radius.
We, when we were out in the field with Jeff today, one thing we talked about on, on the North Fourth also, it's a one-way coming down. And so maybe eliminating parking on one side of the street, so that people can still park, go to the restaurant, back out and go out of that, you know, opposite direction from what they're supposed to go.
This is the most difficult to get at, so, so the, the biggest um challenge will be maintaining access to the businesses that open right up onto a corner. That, that's about the only one that really does that we're ripping out, and so there'll be some special things we'll have to do there, and things, for instance, that I don't, likely that aren't open twenty-four hours a day, so uh we'll probably do some work where you can get a quick set of concrete in, so you can get access back into the building by the morning, work with the owners on timeframes that that works on. Um some of the parking will be restricted um in that corner, but that they have access uh to their properties, uh to their businesses, and we'll work around that so they can keep that, so.
What about um like Mexican restaurant, you know, there are malfunction junctions. Would it be easier to work on those at night where the traffic's less?
Well, this one will be in flagging configuration twenty-four hours a day, so.
Okay.
Um yes, to answer your question, yes, when uh our contractors will read you have to maintain access to businesses, uh there is a short time where you can't close access to, to a business. Um but in this particular instance, it will really drive them to do the work at night. We, we, we don't really need to, say that right on the drawing, it will be, you, you gotta maintain access, you gotta figure out how you're gonna do it. Likely doing that at night is the best way. But for this one, we'll be in twenty-four hour flagging solely because of the turning movement that we, we're taking out, it has nothing to do with the ramp configuration, yeah.
Yeah, I think my greater concern is that access to that, because if obviously the door um where it's located gets smacked out, right, and there'll already no feedwork. We either open seven days a week, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
So, which is, we, our town, they're open seven days a week.
Yeah, so, they, they do have a side door off.
I know, but it doesn't take you through the restaurant, it takes you to the kitchen.
No, this goes right through this diner.
It's right uh in between the motel and the Mexican restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
There's another door.
Oh, so you weren't even aware of that, that, that's very helpful, um yeah.
Isn't that, uh. So it's a fire exit, but you can still use it, no?
Okay.
I'm trying to really want a motel right on the highway behind Best Western is there.
Oh, yeah, 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 I hear what you're talking, you're right, you're right, it takes you on the back.
Yeah, and that would help you guys, that would make it a lot easier, so you're not trying to.
Well, we, we'll be working with the property owners, we, in, in advance, we'll let them know, I think it's a week in advance, we will be there when things will be changing form on their blocks and those kinds of things. Um and, and so something like that, e- even though there's an alternate access, um I'm not sure that should be their primary access if it drives business away, so I don't know that it would change anything unless we get there uh talking to the property owners. Rob, typically we let rightaway, talk to the property owners for anything that's gonna be there, so when he's out talking about a rightaway file there, he'll also explain some of the impacts to construction that would be seen, or, or we'll join him on that if there's someone there who's a little more tricky than others, so.
Um you know, one of, one of the things that we, I, I mentioned that we, uh we need to uh address both pedestrian access or construction and vehicular access. Part of the vehicular access is uh trucking, trucking industry, and um which is, which is a big deal. Uh at all the intersection like here, it's particularly tight, and, and it drives how our temporary traffic control uh plans are, are put together. Uh we do, we need to accommodate the trucking industry, um so that's, that's a part, that's a big part of. Also, I wanted to mention that um uh because of that, because we need to allow access, both vehicular and pedestrian access, uh um each uh each intersection will have multiple phases of work going on, for example, a four, a, a regular intersection's got four corners, uh each corner will be um will be uh constructed individually at different times. We won't be, they won't, the contract won't be able to uh work on one intersection, and then another, and another. They're gonna go, they're gonna have, work on several intersections at the same time, probably the same corner uh of those intersections. So it's gonna, kinda gonna be marching through town at several, several different bases, so uh and that, and that's to allow for vehicular and pedestrian traffic, to access vehicular and pedestrian traffic.
And that would be, too, um like you're talking about trucks, we get a lot of trucks go by Schwab's. And go on North Sixth and turn and go on the highway, that would.
Yeah.
What they, I get them coming both ways.
Sure.
Why couldn't we just route them trucks only after they know turning right uh there on the highway? Uh a lot of trucks down the road that snack shacks on.
J Street?
Yeah, that would be, I mean, you could do like, regular vehicles can turn right there to maybe.
And just straight shot out.
Yeah, pretty straight.
Um sure, we were talking about.
It's right across where J Street is, so it's.
Fourth, North Fourth and J.
And it's a perfect bypass, it's a little bit further down.
Oh, I see.
They're suggesting a D door out.
That would be a very quick and easy, if it goes out to the highway.
Right, so one, one thing that we, uh what we do, and, and John will be the, uh by the way, John will be the construction manager uh to the project as he goes into construction. Uh one thing that, that, that the uh specifications allow is we, we, we put out a general traffic control plan that says, you know, this, this is an idea that works. Contractor can come back and likely will come back and propose something different than, than what we show, and that's to allow him, as long as, as long as the criteria um uh works, you know, all the pedestrians have access, trucks have access, and all these things work, uh he'd come back and propose any, anything, you know, and he says, I've got these signs that I can use, or I've got this equipment that I can use rather than what you're showing in the plans, we can accommodate that as long as, as long as it matches the criteria. So like, um you know, traffic control, I would expect, uh will change uh somewhat to, to, to uh, uh for the, for the contractor. Once, once it's in the construction.
But is that a residential area though?
Sort of mixed use, I think.
It's mixed, yeah, there's businesses and a few trucks are ready to take it, there's a mill at the end.
Right, so you've got ship trucks and stuff, and it's, it's pretty regularly for, and for, I mean, and a door factor too, some pines, stuff's going through their collins, um.
A sizably wide road compared to most of the.
Right, because it is, it's kind of, it was our mill district, because there was other sawmills that are one time too, so.
My concern would be with that corner, trying to get trucks to turn there would be damage to the island that has been redone many times, and damage to um Dollar General's corner.
Right.
Or property, we have not.
Is this during, when we're in a single lane, is that what we're, so um they will be stopped before they make the corner, so we will hold traffic back on each corner, so they're not uh um making that turn, we have a quite, there's like an eight, six flag or configuration there on how we're gonna try and stage into the area, because we're gonna have to hold them back far enough, so when they make that turn, it's a clean turn.
Well, that's why it's a little like that, to J Street, they wouldn't even have to stop, I think, to just turn there. For trucks only, not pedestrian vehicles.
One thing that, one thing that we wanna avoid is putting heavy trucks on city streets.
Yeah.
Uh we don't wanna tear the streets up and leave guys with uh.
Is that, I mean, that's, that's very common, right?
That's kind of.
It is.
So, so that's, that's, we don't, we don't wanna leave you guys with poles, empty, you know, holding up, holding back or broken rope. So. So then we, we, we tried. So that we 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 try to keep, we try to keep traffic as much as possible on on the highway, on the on the intersection.
What's the project, it's mainly on construction?
Uh, see, I think, Howard, I think we're starting next, uh, April.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the project's gonna bid, um, bid opening is scheduled right now for, uh, November fifth. And then, um, we'll probably have a start date of probably not before April. Um, I don't know what would be the weather like for it. Yeah, so it'll probably be not start before then. Um, we probably will still be working through some of the right-of-way at that point. So on some of the plan sheets, you're seeing a dark circle with an X. Those are ones that we're alerting the contractor to that may be a delay. And we'll have a second date to start work on those. And once we get a better handle on when we know that we would acquire those via the right-of-way process, that that's the date we'll put into our specifications. So and anticipate, I would assume, I think they need to settle them a year, number of ramps.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, should go, we should be able to be hopefully completed substantial completion by two October, then October.
Yeah, do you guys have this, a magical date in Lakeview where it's like, no, you don't go past, is it like the fifteenth or the?
Yes, we do. Um, our, our, our biggest event in our community is our, um, rodeo that's what, Laverne?
October thirteenth.
Laverne.
Oh, Laverne.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have restrictions in this there, we can't work during this timeframe.
Right.
It would be great.
I meant, uh, like with winter hits, cause they're kind of like.
Winter shut.
Yeah, we don't, we don't work that out.
If you're getting, if you're getting, if you're getting very far into November, you're starting to take some risks. Because start hitting that and sometimes you can get in the nineties in November and sometimes we're, we're gonna put a snow on it, so.
We're thirty.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, we we have a completion date a lot of those.
Right, and I understand too that the April date, we've had winter here stick around till early May sometimes too, so that's another.
Snow in July.
Yeah, yeah, six inches on the court of July, back to the eighties, so.
We're gonna run that risk, I think.
Yeah. Overdosing on that.
That's pretty much all we got.
Did you wanna show any examples of like where we have awnings or and and just talk about, you know, on the right-of-way for those?
Yeah, Dan, do you have any spots of, uh?
There was a place on Fourth, North Fourth.
Awnings that were, that were looking at? Or or something like that, a sign overhanging or something like that?
Yeah, let's see, which?
So and and so I just made a recap, so the reason we're going up to face the building just so we don't leave a little sliver of concrete, old and new between where the existing right-of-way line is and that face of the building. So that's why we decided to 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 go all the way to the face so we can replace it all.
So in doing that, then we're having to acquire the permanent right-of-way.
Right, right, that's why the permanent easement is there.
That actually is probably why this is first we're doing there, cause that way you're not dealing with, uh, a gap in responsibility or.
Right.
So this is kind of a miniature example, but you can see how the, um. The brick along the face of the building here is a little recessed in from the face. And from our right-of-way drawings, we have, oh, it looks like probably six to eight inches of, I think, sidewalk that was outside of right-of-way along the highway. Into this, this area all on this building. So in order to not leave a vertical, like a tripping hazard or, um, you know, just a vertical edge there. We use our temporary easement up to the building face and then, I'm sorry, our permanent easement up to the building face and then a temporary easement behind that to cover any, um. Facial work or, um, you know, if we have to, we beat up some of the bricks here and have to replace those or, um, that'll cover that work. Um, and there's some more detailed stuff, Rob, we can go over with you with that if you're interested, but that, um.
Do you have, do you have an example of a more extreme overhang?
Yeah, there's a sandwich shop, there's a sandwich shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, go to, yeah, that street is First Street, Danielle, first and F, there's one on the. Yeah, kind of where I tell you we're getting ready.
I think it has to work, it's it's on the way toward the side.
It's a much larger.
I guess there's just little, little bolts there.
Oh, Chinese person. Yeah, there's an example of an awning with the.
And here at, uh, that's actually at First Street, um, all of the sidewalk is outside or. Or is all within right-of-way except for this, um, northeast corner. And, uh, there must not be an overhang there.
That's the best, the right model.
Oh, but I think, yeah, but I think your, uh, overhang is exactly across from that on the, you go to. Chinese restaurant, right?
Yeah.
If you were just there, actually, if you look at Howard's, yeah, the Chinese restaurant, they're like, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but the the difference is there is where our, the right-of-way, the sidewalk is all within right-of-way. So we're just taking, we're just gonna show a temporary easement to cover any work that might affect the building face. So we don't, we don't actually have to trespass to replace the, uh, new sidewalk.
And and the awning does hang over, over the right-of-way?
Yeah. Yeah, so here the right-of-way is right at the, just inside of the building face, so that all of these awnings are encroaches technically.
Shouldn't affect construction in this case, so, I, um, that's easy to back.
Maybe have Rob just talk about what that does with the right-of-way process.
Rob, can you tell us about the right, the, you know, signs and overhangs, awnings like that, that how how it affects the right-of-way process or what the expectations are?
Sure, um, so this is, it's really common to have issues like through, um, towns and cities when we're doing sidewalks. So, um, uh, by doing these with permanent easement, it gives us a lot of flexibility as long as the, um, agency that we're working with, in this case, the town. Um, is in agreement that it's okay to have those overhangs, um, uh, so, you know, as we were looking through, looking at this, I mean, we saw awnings, um, that awning. Um, there was, and really the, I think the idea is that, you know, we just wanna make sure that, um, we'll put it in the sidewalk and we'll fix fingerprinters today. Um, not really disturbing the other parts of the, the buildings and whatnot to, you know, bring character and everything. Um, so the way that we look at property in this situation is that, um, goes over, like anything that would be in the right. Um, during construction or part of the temporary easement, we would basically call out that those items would be preserved and protected. Um, which in this case, uh, you know, that'd be really easy, um, you know, elevated up out of the way, uh, when creating an issue. But if we had something on the ground, uh, you know, it's like a sign base and sign overhung the sidewalk. Uh, we would call that out to, you know, basically be preserved and protected during construction. So that's, that's basically the process, um, for, you know, anything that would come up like that.
I think the only other thing we had, there's a couple of locations where we're getting determina- determinations that those are not allowed crossings. So for instance, at the Safeway, going from the Safeway across the street to the driveway. We're not gonna put a ramp in at the Safeway side and direct people to go to the driveway. That's not a safe crossing, so that one. So we're getting some determinations that those are not good crossings to have. And we are actually, we did get one closure too, back up at Dysfunction Junction, um, or Malfunction Junction.
How was?
Well, definitely they got a Dysfunction Junction, so I don't know how, I think call that one, so. But up there, there's one, uh, crosswalk that we're getting closed. Um, and that's just, it was a bad situation where when people come around the corner, you know, somebody could be walking across there and just to eliminate that. So I think that one, we're gonna have closure signs on, aren't we?
Yep, yeah, right there, Daniel's showing it right there.
Okay.
Put a little, uh, what we call upside-down coat hangers with a sign on it that says crossing closed.
And that's permanent?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and that went through our traffic, uh, unit in Salem. And they made the determination that the safety reasons that should be cau- uh, should be closed. And it not only closes it for, um, handicap or wheelchair-bound people, but everybody, so. And then we did have a little discussion with Jeff in the field today too about, you know, there might be some, um, you know, needs for, uh, temporary closures. And, you know, we were, we were just wondering if, you know, council was going to wanna see all of those or if those are gonna come up. We will work with Jeff, um, getting construction, probably wanna handle those.
Would you think when we do, um, street closures or anything like that, we need far enough in advance so we can put it out?
Right.
So the people know, so I, I think, you know, work with Jeff, he'll know when to put that stuff out and.
Yeah, but I don't think.
Probably for a half a day or something, we should be able to make that determination about coming to a meeting.
Yeah.
If it's gonna be two days, that's a different story.
Right. Yeah.
Right, and if you're, if you've got like a two to four day one, I would recommend on a kind of a month-by-month basis, council meetings are, you know, the.
Seven to four.
Ten, four Tuesdays of every month. So if you've got something coming up for the rest of the month, get it, you know, probably in the last meeting of, get them to us so we can get them in a resolution and that way we can close it. And then that, the newspaper will be reporting on that and that will get out there as far as, obviously we'll politicize it otherwise, but I think it's a good idea for your launch point, so.
Can't, can't we do that one time if we have a traffic control plan?
It would, yeah, definitely, we could adopt a traffic control plan and just do it once and then we have.
Yeah, so we know we have three, three locations where we absolutely are, are setting up closures right now that we can provide you those locations. Just not, can't give you the date yet because the contractor will choose that. Um, and then he may, uh, uh, he or she, uh, sorry, uh, they may came, come in and want to seek other closures at other locations. So some are closed because we don't have enough width, we we can't make turns and stuff on them. Others, they may come in and say, hey, I can get this done in three days, uh, on two corners rather than three days on this corner and three days on the next corner. So there may be those opportunities, but we have some right now we could, we could provide you and show you where we think we're gonna have closures at.
And I assume you don't wanna do a two-part advance, cause again, things can change with material availability and other things like that.
But you, you can at least see it in quite, I don't know what a resolution means to be honest with you, but, um, at least you can see it and you would know out in front that those would be the ones we could do and the other ones.
It, it's a real, it's a real easy, we do them on our, it's what kind of will be like, you just close something for like a street fair or something like that and that.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's just a cleaner, it's something we, I mean, we could authorize in general, close as necessary, but, um, I think it might make more sense just to kind of do them on a monthly basis. Just so that way it's very clear what's going on and.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we can bring that in.
It's up to the council, what what's your guys' preference as far as, if you want them, it's kind of a general one saying that kind of close is needed or would you guys rather kind of do it on a monthly basis?
Well, I think once we know what ones need to be closed, we just go ahead and do it at one meeting, I think would be the best.
Yeah, it's easier that when also we might come back to, uh, every month.
Yeah. Right, right. Yeah, and then we can provide, we can work out how the notice, I think we've got a week notice right now and, cause we're gonna be taking parking and a few other things. So there'll be weekly notices that will be coming in, but the street closure is quite important for me anyway, cause we're showing them on our plan saying you will be allowed to close, there's three of them. Um, and so if there was huge opposition to that, then we would have to change that, um. But if that's okay, then then we, I feel comfortable with what our plans say and anything else they'll have to bring in, contractor will have to bring in.
Right. So my suggestion is bring that to us, we'll do a resolution that it'll be designated with Jeff as public works director to go with that period. If it gets approved, the timeframe will get kind of selected that way, we'll make sure that it's notified and then if there's any changes to that, it can be brought back to council. Is that a council's pleasure as far as?
Okay, I think that's. That's the same, but, Dan, if you want something else different later on, we can do that as well.
Um, when they put that street sweep in, you know, they put those, some of these corners out there.
Oh, wow.
Ramps, yeah.
Those are traffic hazards in my opinion.
Most traffic engineers, uh, would would respectfully disagree with you on that. Um, a lot of folks, particularly in, uh, urban type settings, uh. Most towns desire those because the the primary effect that those have is, uh, what what I think our traffic engineer, um, lovingly calls, uh, street furniture. And the the nice thing about street furniture, like curbs and things like that, is it has a tendency to slow vehicles down. And the number one thing that we at ODOT hear as far as complaints, uh, particularly in urban settings is cars are going too fast. And cars are going too fast.
I live on that street, cause I live on that street, I, but I, I was pretty fast a lot of times.
So those bullbats. So the bullbats, we took them away, you would likely see a, uh, noticeable jump in speed along, along that route.
I I just don't see the ugly orange, orange cones removed by something more, more attractive.
Reason I say that, because I've almost been hit, I don't know, half dozen times, cause you gotta keep the edging out, edging out, edging out. So you can see, cause there's cars parked there and you can't see anybody coming down the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I understand, I I think the bullbats actually make that a little bit better, um, in the sense that you actually have to be in the highway if they weren't there. A, if the bullbat kind of gives you, it doesn't actually give you protections, uh, but it does give, uh, a deterrent to vehicles, you know, going faster there. And it 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 provides encouragement for them to slow down, so, um.
Just gotta get a call on the vehicle.
Well, if I get, if I get hit, I'll call you, jerk.
Certainly call, probably won't get you.
Probably, cause you're right.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else for them?
Yeah, I have that, yeah. Um, I do have, this is the draft, uh, governmental agreement.
Oh.
And so I'll leave this with you, um, here's a copy that's not stapled, so I'm gonna make more. And I'll send Michelle the, um, uh, the file, the P, or the, the word file, for business and, so, certain questions you have. And I'll send contact information to, uh, our events writer. These are pretty standard, you know, ODOT does these, probably somewhere in your files, I'm sure you probably have an intergovernmental agreement from the East Coast project.
Oh, I'm sure we do, so, it's been a while.
Thank you. So, and those are just basically like Rod said, just you, well, it says that the city will accept the right-of-way, uh, that ODOT will be, uh, giving for this project, the permanent right-of-way. So you get more land out of it.
That's the flip side of it is maybe it's definitely the, yeah.
But it's death by a thousand slackers because you're, you're like sixteen, which is not what we're gonna do here, correct?
And we do appreciate you guys coming in and assisting in this process, I I think we, I could speak to the entire council, but you guys have been a lot more responsive than ODOT was back in two thousand one with the street sweep. So we do appreciate that you guys are working with us and understand some of the concerns, cause like you said, there's a few council, I'm sure that we didn't, how the council were around at that time. It was not, it was not a relatively pleasant experience and we're still getting crap poured from the public to this day.
Well, when we first took this product on, you know, Lakeview, Lakeview Union and Enterprise were picked as our model communities because these are gonna be easy peasy. Hasn't quite turned out that way and, um, yeah, so we're cleaning up some of the right-of-way.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much.
Stay away.
Uh, next thing is the budget, the budget treaty is approved, the budget. And as, as presented, Michelle did say that, uh, as time goes on, there are possibilities we can just make it.
Did we leave the fire truck money in the fire truck, I wasn't able to.
Yes.
Okay.
It was a big. It was still, like, it went bad for the fire truck.
Okay.
So the two resolutions are the transferring of money going through, um, to, we'll see a lot more of those next year. Um, and then just stating that we're gonna be collecting property taxes.
So we will still. Yeah, that'll be, that's fine for a while, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion to pass the, um. Let's go to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, Resolution nine eighty-four, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, annual operation project.
Hey, motion made, you have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made a second, vote in favor. Motion made, second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay. Uh, resolution nine eighty-five?
It's just corporations.
Mr. Mayor, I think everybody's gotten fond, we'll make a motion to approve the resolution nine eighty-five in the matter of making budget appropriations for this year, twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made, second, on resolution nine eighty-five, vote approved.
Aye.
Vote opposed? Okay, we'll move on down. All right, you guys need to, we're going to lay us on positions. Now, last time we, I, I think, I don't know, you want to do a work session on those layers on positions? Or we've got a little more time or do you want to try and?
I believe we have a deadline on this one.
I would, uh, really like to, since we're near the end of June, leave, propose that we leave them set the way they are and then make any changes January first, which is, uh, the date that we were supposed to have.
We talk about these all the time and it, you know, the work gets done and, you know, there's point of contact usually to reach these, it may not be the actual person on this list, but that doesn't really matter either. Not to be concerned with who does it work.
No, collective, it's, uh.
We, we should round the people, yeah.
So we have to vote on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to leave the liaison positions as they stand?
I second that one.
Motion made, seconded, vote in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. One poll update.
What?
All right, Nikki.
Well, okay. So, just to kind of give you an idea, this is the OHA guidelines, it's four pages. Um, the procedures for state of Oregon OHA pool reopening that I've, um, given you pretty much coincide with everything on here. So I'll just give you a real brief rundown, we did meet, I had several people from, um, health professionals from county and people from town residency. Um, so there's a couple of things that we do have decisions that we need to come up with, but basically it's under operations, it says review and implement Oregon's guidance for employers. We will follow the same town and like new policy, um, that we all have to follow currently, it's, you know, there's not a whole lot to it. Making sure employees are safe and work environment, but there's some later on things that we have to do. And, uh, two prohibit workers with any of the COVID symptoms, so, um, there's a few larger operations businesses that are doing a question as you start your shift. And it's as simple as this, hey Jeff, have you had a fever? And you can totally answer no, just because I don't want to violate no HIPAA rules here. But have you had a fever in the last seventy-two hours?
No.
Do you have a cough that is abnormal for you?
No.
Are you experiencing shortness of breath or difficulty breathing?
No.
Are you experiencing body aches or chills?
No.
Sweating probably, right?
Yeah.
Do you have a sore throat?
No.
Are you experiencing loss of smell?
No.
Have you been exposed to someone diagnosed with COVID in the last twenty-four hours?
No.
And that is pretty much what the larger law should include it. So that, that covers that there. Post clear signs, um, they have provided signs, obviously, um.
Can I suggest one other sign Nikki that you guys should post, and this is what the, or the school association is saying for theirs?
Yes, sir.
Um, that we cannot, and I, I've said to Michelle some verbiage on that, but it's basically, we cannot completely eliminate the risk of chronic diseases, including COVID. And using this pool.
Injure your own risk.
Injure your own risk, exactly, so.
I actually have a form I'd like to potentially use this year, but that would probably be something that's a little.
I've got, I actually have a form that I sent over to Michelle that's also based on what the schools adopting for its FBA program. So it, and it works for either minors or adults, it's set up in both directions. So there is a form already prepared and my suggestion is you have everybody sign, they're not willing to sign away who they don't come in.
Well, and, and that's what I'd like to do is a registration sheet for several reasons, more so for accident injuries. Um, but, um, also, you know, if we have a child that can't find their parent and somehow something is lost or injury or, or we have a disobedient child.
I, I, I would suggest hold that, but, but I, there is.
I agree.
There is a waiver form available, so it's Michelle's got it, she can kind of get it over to you, but I think that's going to give you, and basically it just puts out the same information that we cannot completely, and you do it in your own risk.
Yes, so I agree. So prohibit, um, let's see, so it has prohibit visitors. So we will, um, have that same, uh, seven question checks, I would like us to have it all that nice and big, um, potentially. Um, saying self-check station, you know, for people to kind of look at as they enter. Also, the number one thing that I think we can utilize is public education using radio, Facebook, newspaper about our expectations for the public. Um, so, we would do those. If we have a visitor who we feel has symptoms, they will perform the above check with questions to the visitor while maintaining six feet distance. If there are symptoms present that we have serious concerns over, we can ask the visitor to leave. If they refuse to leave, we would shut the pool down. I wouldn't expect that anybody would be that defiant, but if, when the visitor leaves, we would disinfect all areas used by the visitor. Four, post-clear signs is a requirement, they have, OHA has given us those signs, they're the same last group seen twenty months. Um, employees are required to have masks, we will purchase masks and they can use their own as well. Um, we're also going to talk about hand washing and help and hygiene. When handling the equipment or cash, they will utilize a box for them to slide under the window, put your cash in, they can pull it in, make change. We've talked about using gloves.
Uh, probably most places are doing.
We really, um, you know, talked about the fact that it gives you a false sense of security because people touch their face. But when you have sanitizer and if you ever put sanitizer on your face and in your eyes or in your mouth, you'll know. So it tends to give you a little bit more, um, I think, stop and don't touch our face. The big decision is do we want to do pre-purchase passes? That would certainly eliminate, um, more cash handling, uh, the pool passes with, that we keep back, that's something the council really needs to be able to make a decision on, if you guys want to do pool passes. And they can purchase them there. So what do you think?
You're talking about season pass?
We can do season passes and we can do a discount, which would give us guaranteed revenue. And with the, with the, the waiver of if we have to close due to state restrictions or.
Else the problem would involve lots of keeping your feet.
I.
Refunding.
I disagree. No, it would be non-refundable. It would be non-refundable.
I disagree with letting the kids do the pool passes because last year they couldn't even tally up and keep track of how many people were out there last year. That was a huge issue.
But we're going to have a sign in sheet too. To help that, but they have to make sure everybody signs in. They would, that's going to be a requirement.
We can have them pay online, that would less.
I would like to, I don't know, is that something that we can utilize? Does it cost any extra?
There's, send it out.
We have a new credit card site. Okay.
We can do credit card, we can pay value, we can do Google.
I love that idea, just to know if we had that technology yet, so I would love to do like prepaid twenty, twenty swims.
That won't be the only way for kids to pay.
No. No, we don't think we can eliminate.
Because a lot of kids are scraped together.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
Yeah, well, my, yeah, a lot of them, yeah.
Right.
Big day.
And I did for the family season passes for entities that we, um, already gave them out to for the twenty year, I revamped those for twenty-one. Okay. Just because of the fact they're really not going to have time for a lot of swimming this summer and I don't think it's totally fair that they get shafted on that. Especially where a season pass is two hundred fifty dollars for a family.
What do they, what do they normally pay?
Two, uh, four dollars a person for everyone? Yeah. Three and under is free. No, three fifty percent, no, no, four and under is free. So three and under is free and then it's four dollars per person above, is there a senior debit card? No?
What about season passes?
Those were two fifty a family and one individual's were one seventy-five.
And we normally open the first part of June and then their second weekend of June?
Yeah, we're opening them.
So they're missing one month out of it.
So what if we discounted of the four hundred, because, or two hundred, because we did have numerous people say they would be interested if it was discounted. That, I did the math on that and roughly for a family of four, it's about, okay, I did the math wrong, I forgot. I remember thinking, oh, I might actually, we ought to use it. How many uses?
Fifty dollars a person.
Yeah. Supposedly it'll be fifty days hopefully, which will be then a dollar a person.
So I mean, that's. Yeah.
Right.
That would be a good buy. So it'd be a good buy. Um. So that would be fifty uses and a family of four, that pays for itself after twelve uses basically. And after that, so, do you guys, do you guys feel comfortable, two hundred dollar family?
I, I think, I think that's fair considering a short season this year.
And then what would we cut the, um, individual to?
What was it?
What is it?
One seventy-five?
One, what, one?
Make it one twenty-five?
Well, twelve, twelve point five is how many uses you would get now.
One twenty-five.
That would give you thirty uses for it pays for itself, so it's not a steep swing of the wheel.
No, it's a good deal.
No. What about? Twenty-five uses, I'd say seventy-five would probably be more reasonable. The only reason I think those are a great buy deal is it's guaranteed revenue and it'll be non-refundable. What about seventy-five? Wait, let's see, so good, two kids.
Eighty.
Two kids, we want them.
Yeah. If you do that, you have to give a lot of change on hand, that would be somewhat difficult.
So what's?
We, we have.
No, eighty dollars for an individual season pass.
We have an estimate on how many family passes we actually sell each year.
Tom, do we know how many family passes we normally sell per year?
I haven't done it for the last two years.
Seems like that.
On the other last.
At the end of the year to really get a breakdown, and what I requested last year, what happened was a, an actual sit-down meeting to go over what actually happened at the pool. And we have a twenty thousand dollar budget and, you know, what, what were the dailies? I mean, what, what do we really know happened at the pool? And the issue I think is the change, a, a great change in what will be expected in the future of actually signing people in, making sure we know the numbers every day what happened. How many of them were family pass or individual pass versus how many actually paid with cash or by card or something. So then, at the end of the year, we can really look at what do we need to do differently? Because, you know, just doing the numbers at twenty thousand budget revenue, all we need to sell, sell is a hundred family passes. Now, do we have a hundred families in this town that have been buying the passes? No.
Well, I mean, technically all of them seem to be.
Yeah, and so there's close to the, you know, probably twenty-five to fifty.
Yeah.
But, so it's, it's just a matter of, you know, we just need better bookkeeping of what's going on up there, I like the Western job.
Oh, I, I don't think, I don't think any of that stuff's going to be going away folks, regardless of what happened with COVID, I think that's going to be pretty much a requirement from most public and things like this going forward. Until they, even with a vaccine, I don't think that's going to change, so you guys are going to be doing that permanently regardless.
I'll go away anytime soon.
No.
Yeah.
So we just need to figure out, what are we, I mean, if we wind it up, I, I like the idea of it being easier, you give your name, you do your little sign in. The, um, staff can just put a hole through your card, uh, that they retain, um, which we will ensure they actually do, but what would be preferred individual price?
It's, it's one fifty now?
One seventy-five.
It's one seventy-five now?
So we're cutting that through, if we're cutting the, the, the family one down by fifty, because we just cut the other one down by fifty as well?
Well, I think that's, see, one, one seventy-five is behind the first place.
I know.
I mean, we normally only have a hundred, like sixty-six days is what I counted, but like two years from the beginning last year. So fifty down, we all lost sixteen days, I mean, I, I'm, I'm good at a hundred.
Yeah, I would think, I, you know.
I think we need to look at this.
I think we will definitely be able to have some information moving forward next year, obviously it's going to be a different, but if we have a system of tracking this, then, then we, uh, we will, we'll get some people tracking. So to track, just a suggestion, and Michelle's looking to see if there's an app for it right now, because they do do free apps for stuff. But make it where each kid has a barcode on the back of their pass, it gets scanned as they walk through the door. I would love to have something like that eventually, um, where we do, we offer laminated pool cards. The problem with that is we will have, um, non-family members using other family members' passes, so. But then maybe it still needs each on the card. Yeah, I mean, you could scan that family in, but it gives you, and then you could put on the scan thing, there was just one person out of that family there that day that used that card. Unless you scan like a library card for each individual.
I think you definitely, if you're going to, if you're going to do, if you're going to do a family pass, I think what you, if you're going to do it that way, you need to, you need to issue a pass for each individual, just like you put an individual pass. In a paper, it's family, each member of the family should have that.
We're really toward a time here to get everything done here.
That's for moving forward, but I think that's a great idea.
One of the names, well, that we cannot do this year and that it is a good idea in this future, but right now they found a time to get out.
We should check with other pools and our agency if they're doing.
And you're going to have a sign in sheet, so it'll be a lot of data entry initially, but that'll be a one-time thing, then basically around just six.
So we're going to do a sign in sheet, um, where they sign in and out, uh, you know, or staff will be monitoring when somebody leaves, you know, um, and, and asking their name. If they don't already know, a lot of these kids do get very familiar with our staff, so it helps, but. Um, the next thing is, uh, new equipment is being ordered, so one of the requirements, ensure equipment is in good condition, that's a normal pool guideline. We are ordering some new equipment, face masks, rescue tubes, gloves, cleaning products. Um, the next one is closed fountains, done, that's not an issue, it's been done. Um, we have signs, we have signs to require physical distancing, um.
Did you guys make the determination whether you're opening a locker room or not?
Sort of, yeah. Okay, there, just, just a second, so require staff to wear face mask, that was the stuff in all the interviews that we made sure staff understood, that was a requirement. We will be purchasing them, items nine through twelve do not apply. The next distance and occupancy, we will have notices that are required about the physical distancing. We will educate the public and are, one of the things we really want, parents to have conversations with their kiddos that, um, you know, your group you come in with, it's fine if you're less than six feet, but we need to be aware of spacing with other people. Uh, and, and we will have a physical dista, what do they call, physical distance monitor. We have a candidate that we really felt would be great for that. Um, we also have two other candidates that will be, um, uh, yes, bill and eligible to be that position, so we're three. Um, and we will do a lot of conversation and training with that staff member and I think it would be great to gently remind people, hey, six feet apart kiddo or, um, you know, whoever. And obviously we don't have issues with the deck because we don't have equipment on the deck. Um, we will have, uh, limiting visitors, so our big thing we're going to do, and because of our numbers, we think we can do this pretty easily, occupancy of six feet. We will have a billboard, um, sandwich board that says we are full if we, for some reason, you know, and then we can flip it back and forth and people, as people leave. I can tell you the highest number I ever remembered after talking to a lot of people was eighty people in one day, but not all at the same time. So sixty gives us more than our, um, square footage per person, which isn't required for outdoor space, but, um, sixty should not be an issue. If we find that there's some overcrowding, we will reduce that number more. So, um, sixty is all at one time, not in a day.
Do you think it might be easier to start smaller and maybe get bigger instead of going bigger and then going smaller?
Yeah, that would make.
I mean, it's not a bad idea, um, we just have never really ever had that sixty. Um, I think pretty consistently we get thirty, um, because I can tell you that we've done one. Um, because I can tell you that we've got one fifteen make sure with lifeguards and rarely is there two lifeguards out there. So I, I can't say I've ever experienced two. I don't think I've ever seen three lifeguards out there. So that, that's what, you know, for the council. Yeah. Um, also if we run into lap swims where we find people are really wanting to utilize the lap swim and we have, um, only one group or family in, in a lane, we will institute a thirty-minute lap swim maximum per group or individual. Um, and then if we need to do any kind of calling in reservations, we will be very flexible. Now, all of this is flexible because if OHA changes their guidelines, we're gonna adapt whatever they change it to. Um, a lot of aerobics, obviously, is like, they're gonna have social business.
Right, well, we don't have to worry about walking on the gym.
So alter the pool layout is not needed, number four, see above. Cleaning and disinfecting, there's no minimum that they require per OHA COVID guidelines. The pool has standard guidelines, we're gonna follow those and a little above and beyond. Um, we are going to do daily deck cleaning before shift along with the bathrooms, toilets, showers, floors, surface areas, and a crew cleaner. We are also gonna do an hour view cleaning, um, of surface areas such as the counter, the front entry desk, um, the shower, the bathrooms, um, and we will have sanitizer available, which is required, along with soap and water. Um, and we have closed down, Justin and his crew has already closed down, so the shower lounge, one shower. Um, and they, they look beautiful because they're painted, went up there today, it looks so good. Um, and the bathrooms already meet the requirements with the doors, so there's no issue there. Um, lifeguards never clean while they are on lifeguard duty, so that's not an issue. And we will also put maximum occupancy based on square footage, signs, or the locker room. Um, and we have our social distance monitors, and that's about it. But if you read those guidelines, they're very ambiguous and very, um, there's not a whole lot to them, honestly. I feel like we, we can do better than what they said as a standard.
Do, do people with, uh, with a season pass have priority? We did have a big crowd, season pass.
First come, first served. Just like everything else, yeah, just like Safeway's got an occupancy limit, first come, first served, as one goes.
Yeah, there, there's no other real way.
Well, we, we had people when we were closed for thunderstorms and stuff, wanted their money back for that one particular day.
We're gonna institute some huge changes for, I think, moving forward that, you know, um, like obviously this K-Hell has kind of run into issues where there was no snow. That's one thing, but when we have weather that we can't control.
Right.
Um, uncontrollable things, but.
Act of God.
We're gonna have some waivers in there. So I think that is pretty much it. I have something for executive session that we'll go over and that's.
Okay.
You got it?
Oh.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, sorry. Real quickly, when were you thinking about the, when it would be open? Have you thought about the date?
Really am hoping for Tuesday, but I think that, um, shipping for the equipment and the swimsuits will be probably getting here Monday, Tuesday, depending on.
So maybe like the second or third?
Yeah, I would love, like, by next weekend would be great. Like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So we will definitely close down our Facebook users and stuff. We're doing training this week.
Yep.
I, I don't really have anything to add. We need, uh, we've been working on the bathrooms up there in the big park, uh, along with two other stuff in the pool house. So, yeah, we'll be ready.
They get a lot in the pool house, but they all sit a lot with the, um, bathroom, the part of bathroom. New toilets, new roof, paint coming.
Paint coming, new doors.
We should put you out, it looks awesome, we should have the bathroom.
I'm gonna put lights in there too. There's never been lights before. We got outside mics by those bathrooms, kind of a scary place at night, getting there. So, you know, and it's like the only public bathroom down other than the huge park.
Yeah, and in the grass, I mean, everything's looking beautiful over there. It would be a great place to go and utilize those space for people and stuff.
So, I wish I would look closer at the fifty-day opening for your kind of idea. Um, you know, in the past we closed, you know, the week before fairing starts. The excuse always is, is that our kids have got a poor agenda or this, that, or the other. It's, you know, to me, you know, fair would be one of the best times, especially this year because.
We may not have.
We might not have the standard fair that we normally have, you know, right? I mean, it, no concert, no, no, right, it's all this. It seems like if we could stay open that week, that would be a huge week for us.
I am flexible, I think it all depends on.
School might even start, I mean, there's so many unknowns.
We may not even have.
But I, I hope their employees realize, you know, tech cards realize we would like them there and, you know, it's more money in their pockets when they're working, so, you know, I think.
Yeah, we didn't talk with them about deadlines actually, so.
And, and a lot of it will be dependent on what happens with the school. I mean, if they're doing online only school, then they're available to work, then we can staff it.
September's often that.
What's?
No, they were super enthusiastic, I always say, they were very excited to work. And they're gonna work.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, that'll be in the second, maybe, at the end of the year, the summer.
So I don't know if we need to vote on these or if there's anything you guys.
I would suggest that we make a motion to check the schedule plans presented with those two prices, I think would be appropriate. See if you guys have a.
I mean, I have totally agree.
Yeah, so we're making a motion to approve the, uh, opening of the pool plans presented with.